... Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Hi, Adrian.
Good morning. So today's financials include a supplemental appropriation from the Sheriff's Office, 911 equipment account for the state mandated upgrades to that system, cash transfer from the Commissioner's Office to the Public Assistance Fund for the general funds 2019 first quarter special fiscal year mandated share. Incumbrances include travel requests from the Common Pleas Court to attend the 2018 Ohio Specialized Docking Conference in Columbus, a travel request from the Probate Court to attend the 2018 Annual Probate Courts Clerks Training Seminar in Lewis Center, travel requests from the Probate Court to attend the 2018 Probate Court Administrators and Clerks' Roundtable in Lewis Center, and finally, a travel request from the Probate Court to attend the 2018 Court Investigators Workshop Conference, also in Lewis Center. Among the vouchers are $32,000 from JFS to the Jogger Board of Mental Health for the third quarter 2018 therapeutic services, and $33,901.97 from Water Resources to Concord Road Equipment for a 10 and 1/2 foot dump truck body installed.
And the ones of supplemental appropriation, you want to call their attention?
There is a supplemental appropriation for the clerk of courts to their certificate of title administration. They have $27,000 coming into salaries, 200 into Medicare, 2,500 into OPERS, and $32,000 into hospitalization. And there is a new employee that they did hire there this year, Aaron Knife, which I think accounts for a majority of what they're looking for there. I'm not sure on the hospitalization checking. I had to have a couple of different departments increase their hospitalization accounts in order to make the hospitalization payments at the end of this month. This was one of those. I'm not sure if it was just improper budgeting from last year carrying into this year, or what the deal was with the hospitalization.
Hospitalization could be a place, picking up a plan that wasn't originally anticipated. That's very easy. If somebody suddenly comes on as family, that can be a big change in what was budgeted.
So what, how much was the overrun on that?
On the hospitalization? It was, I was asking them to put $32,000 in there to get them through to the end of the year.
Really?
Yeah.
And that's including a new employee as well?
Yes.
Great. Second.
Commissioner Flickel? Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So we'll go to number three, the engineer.
Morning.
Good morning.
This is just housekeeping, signing the actual, signing the contract with Ron Yank Beating for the Bundy'sburg Road Resourcing Project in the amount of $620,000. Already awarded the county.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Flickel?
Yes.
This is good, all right?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, go along.
Just take, thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
We're here this morning for finishing the advertised republic hearing for amendment number one under BF 1718, the death allocation grant that we're currently doing. The amendment will be deleting the county home as a project and the county planning project to help do our updated economic development plans at the county. And increase the D C paving project. As you all are aware, when we give these estimates, we do the grant applications. It's a good year before the project actually goes out to bid and with asphalt contracting, things like that, prices, asphalt price has gone up significantly since the estimate. So luckily, we have extra funds now because of county home, and we can still help pave that parking lot in D C.
Okay. Any luck with the, any luck with those applications, Dave?
The applications?
I know.
From last week? Nothing yet, no. Do we have a motion on number four?
Second.
Commissioner Flickel?
Yep.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
You want to talk about?
And then, yeah, so real quick, you know, just wanted to bring up, kind of to just put to the spotlight, you know, the efforts with community economic development, that we had an unfortunate situation in the county with a business that had been, you know, given a revolving loan, and they ended up in a financial distress situation, which ended up in a bankruptcy, which put us pretty much at risk of losing over $400,000, and $451,000 to be exact. And, you know, Dave, I know that you kind of took the bull by the horns right away, and Kelly, and you guys really stayed on top of this, along with our prosecutor's office, and just kind of got ahead of this, because if, I don't think that if you guys didn't have the efforts that you had and engaged in this, that we would have been able to collect it, and we pretty much didn't lose a dime on it. And so, you know, thank you for that, and I really do appreciate, you know, the work that you guys did, and also our prosecutor's office, and outside counsel that we brought in too, to make sure that that was done. That would have been a big, big hit to our program, you know, taking a $451,000, $445 hit. So we've got the check, and from the prosecutor's office, actually came in, I believe, on Friday. And so, yeah, thank you. It's a big plus.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Also, Dave, Kelly, I got a, here's another, also speaking on the community development grant, I got a letter today from the Development Services Agency with 100% audit too, so.
I agree, yeah. They did a good job.
Yeah. So I just want to give you this letter also, just what they'd sent to us also.
On the file.
All right. Thank you. Yep. And Glenn.
Morning.
Morning. Joe, and we've got a, and we've also got some information on that to kind of give you a little bit more detail, so got something actually typed up for you to be able to take on that, just so, there's a whole lot of different moving parts in that, so kind of gives you a little bit more of an understanding on that whole process. I'm sorry.
Number five is, this is a rolling shelf that the Health Department had. Court of Courts wanted it for the title office, so what they're doing is going to move it from one area to another. Reason for 2,000 is the platform that it moves on. Most of that will get destroyed, so they got to redo the platform on that. So you're looking at like a $12,000, $13,000 rolling shelf. So this is something good for Court of Courts, all their titles and everything.
Now, this is going to go where?
In building eight.
And is this movable? Is this, is this transferable too, as far as the equipment?
Could say we build a new building, can you move it?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
This is one of those, like, moving walls that's got?
Yeah, you roll it and it moves, the walls move around and everything, so.
Okay.
Second. Commissioner Flickel? Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
This is Bill.
The next one's for seasonal help up to five. We got some folks down there at the county home who can bring in, put in my lawnmowers or shovels and have them shoveling and everything. It's not, they couldn't be in all the time. We got a lot of little things that we're trying to get done also, also to help out some of the next step kids if they apply and everything down there, so I think it's something really great with those kids down there also.
You got people applying?
They will be, yes.
I'm seeing a lot of help wanted, that's the reason I ask, what your response is, if people are, you're seeing a good response?
I've been talking to next step a lot lately, so those kids are putting in, they want to apply, they can do stuff down there, so.
Are they old enough to run?
Get them the pressure wash.
Run the mower and stuff?
Yes. These are like 18 to 20, some years old kids, so they can do those things. So get them the pressure wash, get up and do flower beds and stuff like that and everything, so. And hopefully, we can keep them throughout the year and get them in the right direction.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Flickel?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the other items that you, that you were talking about, this is a resolution that is required to be done by October 1st. This is for the accepting the amounts and rates determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county. This is something that we'd like to do.
Did you guys have any questions on that?
No.
Okay.
So this is a resolution for 18129.
Okay. Do we have a motion on that?
Second.
Commissioner Flickel? Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
The next one is to, I'm asking the Commissioners to approve and adopt an indigent burial policy pursuant to O R C 9.15 and add an addendum to the policy procedure manual to be effective today, September 25, 2018, and further accept the vest funeral home fee for cremation services in the amount of $995. This is something new, it's new. We do not have a policy currently in place.
I was going to say, I've not seen this before, so.
Yeah, this is, this is.
Who makes the decision on the burials?
Well, there's an application if, to determine, you determine whether the, based on the application that would be submitted, if they are classified as indigent, and then if they are indigent, then you would cover the cremation services and they would be buried in the county home cemetery.
Through, through what? Through the Commissioner's Office?
There's a requirement under the O R C.
Okay.
That, and the thing is required to be paid for by the county.
Does that sense? I mean, we haven't done it in the past?
We have had, we've done two to date, I believe, that we've done, Dave, on indigent burials.
Yeah, we've only done a couple, but.
But we've never had a policy, and we've never set a dollar amount.
And we have, you have the right to set a cap on it.
But so, but by how the vice code work, the Commissioner's Office is to administer that.
Well, the Commissioner's Office is responsible for covering the cost of people that return to be indigent, so by putting this policy in place, you got a cap on what we have to pay.
Did we, did we check with Funeral Homes to see what?
I submitted letters to a funeral home, and one of their received response gift from was Best Funeral Home in Middlefield. His fee is normally $1,395, and he's reduced it to $995. It includes pickup service, cremation, and returning the ashes in a burial receptacle.
How does this connect with the township's responsibility? The township, the cemetery?
They are separate. They have their separate responsibility. So there's certain guidelines underneath the section of the code, whereas it talks about whether they're institutionalized, or if the, where the death occurs, and.
So.
And if a body is claimed by a family member, we have provisions in there, if a body is claimed by a family member that is not considered any of them, then they would be required to pay.
How did, how did this come about? Like, how did this get to?
We had a person that was technically claimed but unclaimed by a family member who's considered to be in, on the line of being considered indigent, and the family member made arrangements to pick it up from the county, the Cuyahoga County Board, because they needed the space. And so the Heritage Cremation Society picks up the body, cremated him, but the family member cannot pay. And I cannot send an application to determine his indigence until we have a policy in place.
So did we talk to the prosecutor's office about this at all?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
And actually, Jerry has been involved in helping me with this process.
Okay. And do we have a procedure outside? This is a pretty brief statement. Do we have a whole?
There's a whole policy.
We have a whole policy?
We have a whole policy. My township actually has a policy in place, and we took their policy and their application and kind of kind of voted it to making a county policy. So it doesn't really fit in the personnel policy manual.
No.
There's no other place to add policies, so the procurement policy isn't, it was in as an addendum, so I'm asking to put the indigent policy in there as well.
And so we put them at the county home cemetery?
We actually have done two to date. We have been here.
Cremains.
We.
And we did, we did one, I know we had the minister that does services at jail came over and did nice little burying ceremony, because there was no one else to do it, or some of the respectful burial, which is what we did.
The coroner actually contacted me initially when this whole process started, and I've actually talked to Chief Rowan several times about the current one that we are working on. So we have an invoice from the Cremation Society, but I can't pay that invoice until we determine his indigency.
Okay. Okay. Second. Thank you.
Commissioner Flickel? Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Something new every day.
You have a box show up at the front desk, it's like, what do we do now?
Send in the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, we have to go to your transit public hearing.
All right.
Thanks for the blue bus.
I know, I saw that when I came in this morning.
I was like, is that thing stuck?
Can't miss it.
I'm like, is he stuck in our front yard? What's going on? Yeah, we tried to turn around. Need to make a motion to waive the reading?
Yes.
Motion to waive the reading?
Move to waive the reading.
Do I have a second?
Second? Yeah, second, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Flickel?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
This is Bill.
New look.
What's that?
You've got a new look. You're pushing your hair up and.
A little modern.
Cut your beard going down.
Kind of look like you guys.
Mike Dick.
Representative.
Go Bears!
I hope everybody noticed the bus out there, that's our newest vehicle. It is a different color than all the other vehicles, and I, we can't afford that color, to be honest with you, all the time, but we did put aside money for the last, to be honest with you, 18 months to be able to purchase that color. It's roughly around $4,900 to get it painted. I got it at a very steep discount from the vendor, because I strung her a little bit, but still, that's, but what will appear on there, on all our buses going forward as we go through them, is that it's public transportation, because I don't think people in the county really understand exactly what we do still, as great as that sounds. That being said, Jug County Transit, as in the past years, will be requesting both federal and state funding for continued operations. There is a difference, though. This year, ODOT has not granted any funds at this time to any rural transit across the states. And when I say it's different, it's normally when I come up there, I'm able to talk about how much I'm going to receive, well, not how much I'm able to receive, I don't really receive it, from the feds, for capital capitalized maintenance, and from the state. So, and I'm usually able to give you a number. This year, we cannot do that, because ODOT has decided to not grant any rural transits, any funding until the middle to late November. So it's kind of a little bit tough to budget that kind of thing going forward now. They're waiting to get my funding request, as well as requests from all the other agencies in the state before making any decisions, so again, like in previous years, I have no monetary amounts to review with you. I can only review what the funds will be earmarked for. The first one is, we always have, a federal capital request. That fund is used to replace two vehicles, and the lettering on them, the two vehicles we're replacing, they have, they have their, they met the requirements from ODOT, six years, 150,000 miles. We replace, generally replace two a year. We do have two other vehicles that we could replace that have the same amount of mileage, however, we do not have the local funding to replace those at this time. I've been told that my local share for each vehicle next year will be 20%. This year, it was 10%, and I believe last year, it was totally free from the state. And to explain what that means, a vehicle generally costs about $66,000 for us to purchase. The state generally, when we get them off the state contract, the state generally picks up 90% of that, or 80% of it, so we generally have to pay, like last year, this year, we pay 10%, so we had to pay roughly $6,500 to receive those buses. We get that $6,500 from the vehicles that we sell that they're replacing, so the ones that, and that should have been working out that way. However, next year, based on the 20%, each of those vehicles, our local share will probably be right around $13,000. So we're going to be, we'll get, we'll get $13,000 from the sale of our two buses, the other 13, we're going to have to take up out of our budget somewhere. Federal capitalized maintenance request, this is the amount for the salaries and benefits of maintenance staff, as well as 1/3 the salaries of the operations manager. Also includes the cost of parts and tires for the vehicles. Again, that's an 80% reimbursement, and that's generally, the capitalized maintenance request is generally for rolling stock only. That's why the hostler, our mechanic, and 1/3 of our operations manager goes towards that, that salary goes towards that. We generally get about $185,000, that's what we got last year. I'm not anticipating anything less than that this year, but you never know, I mean, you never know what's going to happen. Federal operating funds, this fund is used for, generally for the overall costs associated with the operations of the department, with except for the noted exceptions. It includes the driver's dispatch salaries, utilities, fuel, general maintenance, et cetera. This is the largest amount of the grant awarded to transit, and when I say awarded to, we are not, again, not given that money, that money is set aside for us and drawn out. We get 50% of that back every, every month that we turn in invoice. We turn, we're tasked by ODOT to turn in a reimbursement invoice every month to them, and they reimburse us based on what we spend. So if we spend, federal operating funds, if we spend, very generally, if we spend $50,000, they're going to reimburse us $25,000. So the other $25,000 has to come out of local cash. We get state grant funds. That state grant fund is a contribution straight from ODOT, and they do allow us to use that as local cash. Our other local cash sources are what we earn on the fare box, elderly and disabled fares that the state reimburses us at, at a specific rate. Last year, it was right around $53,000, for this year, I'm not sure, moving next year, it should be right around the same. Any contracts we have with any agencies or individuals, the Bureau of County Commissioners does give us $53,045, however, the fact of the matter is, is that I have a cost allocation that I have to pay back to the Commissioners, so this year, we will probably get about, a net about $3,000 from the county. Again, the monthly invoice and the reimbursement, and I will just say, many in the county think we receive these funds immediately. I've spoken to many people, and they had asked, you know, our operating budget is probably about a million, two, a little later today, exactly what it is, a million, two, a million, three, and the folks think we get about $700,000, $800,000 of that right off the bat, here you go, spend it. That is not how it works with the state. We have that, able to draw down those funds, but we only get what we, we only get reimbursement based on what we spend, and that's very important to note, because if you don't have local cash, you be able to purchase fuel, employ drivers, pay the light bill, then we cannot get that money back in reimbursement. You probably wonder how we start the year with that kind of thing. Well, we start with a carryover, and generally, that's anywhere between $60,000 and $65,000 raised, and we've been averaging the last few years. And then, as that, as probably the Commissioners know, we're usually stretched until the state decides to give us our December reimbursement and federal monies from J A. The restrictions on my grant are as follows. No expenditures on offshore services. Copies of all documents relating to the contract, including bids and financial reports, must be submitted to ODOT. Maintain a complete and up-to-date inventory, which has to be completed monthly, is also a county requirement. Submission of a four-year capital plan, operating plan required. Copies of purchased orders or P Os for capital items. Ohio Department of Transportation written concurrence prior to implementing any system changes, like we had fares or hours changes, which we have not had, any fare changes, just the notes since 2008, so it's been 10 years. Monthly invoices must be reflected of the actual expenses, those are county monthly reports, and we have three ways that we make sure that those invoices are accurate. Number one, we have a Quick Book, the product that we use. We also have the county's New World, county system that we use, and then we also have our grant from the state, what they call Black Cat Grant Management System, and those three numbers have to, have to match before we can get any reimbursement. And as reflective of my staff, Jack and Joanna and Kayden are not here, they make that happen every month, they watch the dollars every month for us, they're very good at it. We have required insurance coverage. We must comply with drug-free workplace laws. We must follow D E O practices and also D B E practices if we so desire to. This was the first year, we actually had a D B E, that's a disadvantaged business enterprise, do some work for us, so very minimal, but they were able to do something for us. Required drug and alcohol testing in all ODOT required training for employees. Mandated compliance with procurement policies. We're mandated by the feds to cover a certain amount to get three bids on everything we purchase. As a matter of rule, at Jug County Transit, we get three bids on everything we purchase, whether it's $10 or $10,000. Adherence to ODOT grant management program, Black Cat, and again, that program is, it's got very precise, we were starting to sell some, but it's very precise now about expenditures and procurements, and it's watched very closely by the state. Are there any questions, comments? Any questions or comments from the four county commissioners? How many miles on your new bus? That one right there, we have it put in service yet, it probably has maybe 1,000 miles, because they have to drive it from Alcar. Is that ADA compliant, or all of them? Our buses are 100% ADA compliant. All compliant, yeah. Yeah. Our buses all have E R P lips, they have everything needed too, so there's no. If you ever, I know through the WACCA, you can file for vehicles, right?
He's rolling the dice.
With that comes all kinds of strings. Yeah, yeah. As far as the, by through the WACCA, we, if. I just wanted to see if Skip was awake. Well, the WACCA, we buy our vehicles off the stupid bid, so we do not have to involve the WACCA. Also, there's two transit asset management plans that the federal government requires, one is the WACCA is required by the M P O, and there's one that is required of us, we decline the invitation to join WACCA's M P O for the transit asset management plan. However, ODOT hands one for us for the rural transits, so in fact, they were just up last week to look at our vehicles and our buildings to ensure that we're compliant with that. I probably should mention, we might have another source of income possibly next year with the underserved area. I know you guys approved that last week or two weeks ago, where we have basically the exchange of funds. It gets kind of complicated when you have a, part of Jug County is considered a rural urban area, that's underserved by us, so the feds give the local M P O, which is the WACCA, funds to service that area, which they generally, for the most part, do not do. We have part in Bay Ridge, an immigrant with R T A, and part with Lake Tran up here in the north. Those funds come from, they call, what they call the 5310 fund, which we are not able to access as a rural county transit. Our funds are 5311, however, Lake Tran and I, really not Lake Tran and my staff, but not me, I just signed a favor to talk to Ben. They work together to get us, so Ben can take those 5310 funds, Lake Tran, in our name, and use them, and in return, they give us some local cash. So that may also be another source of funding for this year. I'm not sure how that's going to work out as far as turn that into ODOT. But I have hope for that going forward every year, we can probably do that with them, because it's a, it's a good, it's a good deal for them. They get their 5310 funding that we've been normally, I don't want to say be frozen, but we're not. that we've been normally, I don't want to say be frozen, but will not be used, and then we're able to get local cash, which enables us to put in the operating and, and not have the strings attached pretty much by, with fancy, so.
I'll just add on a matter of serious note, Mike has done a fantastic job since he's come on board at improving our transit services and within the constraints of ODOT and the federal transportation, there was a lot of requirements and strings and so on and so forth, so within those, he's done a great job at having a pretty effective transit. You start taking monies outside of what we're already taking, then you have new strings and the costs go up and the services don't necessarily get better, because you have other people making decisions for us, so that's part of the reluctance on sometimes taking some of these other funds, so, but Mike's done a great job.
Thank you.
Personally, I think, I'm kind of curious, are the new drivers going to get a new uniform to go on track?
Uh, no. No, we're gonna, we're gonna, that again, and, and, but you may laugh, but we have to watch every penny, and even though we have a, a contract with Sintas, we're not convinced them to change the, the color a little bit, not quite orange, we're not going to do that, but when you cut, when you go with that, there's different types of cloth involved, the clothing, and they want to charge a little bit more, remotes, blah, 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 and I don't want to do that.
As long as it's not UPS brown.
No, it's not going to be brown, trust me, I don't even have a brown suit, you know, but, yeah, thanks for that, Skip, that's really due to the staff that we have worked on there, it's, you know, I just signed the papers, I know the, the rest of them, they, they do a great job, like I said, like you say, making sure it runs smoothly.
So I've seen services improve, I mean, over the years, and do, you know, I laid this all on you, I know you've got a fantastic staff.
Yeah, you do a great job.
But, you know, I think overall services have improved in a lot of ways, in, in response to input that you've gotten from various organizations, because you contract for certain resources, I mean, it's worth noting, you stand up here and tell them to, people give you, recognize the efforts that you guys put in, so, it's worth saying.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
You.
If you might.
Thanks.
Your motion, Brad, or Nick? Is, um, number nine, we've got a change to the budget hearing schedule with the Common Pleas Court, they had some cases that were going on and, so there was a little bit of a conflict of that, so they changed their, their date and time. Do we have a motion on that? Second.
Commissioner Claypool?
Yep.
Do you have a motion on that?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Right.
Unique court involved by area are also looking some slight adjustments.
Changes. Okay. And then, so now we've got executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee.
So.
President.
Before we go into executive session, do we want to handle?
Sure, I mean, we can do that, I had it on here to do right at the end, but, so we want to have a motion to appoint Skip as an alternate for the county health board meeting this evening to represent the commissioner's office.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Claypool?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Right. And then participating is going to be Dave, Jerry.
I need a second.
Is this, is this today?